That's the highest.
Twenty-one seventy. Girl Scout Troop Two-One-Seven-Eight is here to present the city and the city council with their project. Come on up, girls.
Hi, we're Long Beach Girl Scout Troop Two-One-Seven-Eight. We are working hard to earn our bronze award. That's the highest award a junior girl scout can earn, and we need your help. We are hosting a blood drive at Saint Mary's Church in Long Beach on Sunday, June tenth, from eight-thirty a.m. to two-thirty p.m.
Donating is important because it saves lives. Did you know that a single donation of one pint of blood can save three lives? And that eight-hundred pints of blood are needed every day to meet the needs of patients in over fifty Long Island hospitals?
In order for our blood tribe to happen, we need at least eighty donors. To be a donor, you have to weigh at least a hundred and ten pounds, between the ages of sixteen and seventy-five, and must bring identification. We would really appreciate it if you supported our troop and helped save lives by coming to our blood drive on June tenth. It would also be a big help if you spread the word. Please like and share our Facebook page, Long Beach Girl Scout Troop Two-One-Seven-Eight Blood Drive. Thank you. See you on June tenth.
Girls, if you could just wait one second, we're gonna start the official meeting, and we would love if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So just give us one second. Yep.
Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach, held Wednesday, May thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven p.m. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo.
President.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore.
President.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Aramo.
Here.
Let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager Michael Tagney and Assistant Corporation Counsel Greg Kalnitzky. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
Girls, if you would please lead us, we would be honored.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, we just wanna thank, on behalf of the city council, we thank our troop Two-One-Seven-Eight. Can we just celebrate them one more time for doing an amazing job? And we hope that you'll come out and support the girls on June tenth, and we hope that, once again, the information that they shared will inspire you to share the information, and also make sure that you share this information on social media with respect to the Facebook page. So, once again, let's give a hand to our troop Two-One-Seven-Eight.
Thank you, girl scouts. Thank you for that, and we will begin with the city manager's update.
Thanks to everyone who joined us on Monday for our annual Memorial Day Parade, the she is grand marshal with the veterans of the global war on terrorism. As always, the Memorial Day Parade and ceremony was dedicated to the remembrance of the men and women who sacrificed their lives in defense of this great nation. With that in mind, the city is pleased to announce that it has launched the Department of Veterans Affairs with the goal of providing veterans and their dependents with information and access to the resources they need and deserve. Residents who visit the office will receive a package containing information concerning a number of issues, including PTSD, healthcare benefits, and advice. Heading up the department will be Vincent DeSalvo, a veteran of the Vietnam War and a forty-two-year resident of the city. Vincent is generously donating his time to help educate and assist veterans and their families. This is a wonderful initiative that he's launching on behalf of the city, and we're thrilled to offer this service to our veterans. The city's Department of Veteran Services will coordinate with agencies on the federal, state, and county level. For more information or to schedule an appointment, please call seven oh five seven two eight eight. Beach passes are on sale. As a reminder, two thousand and eighteen beach passes can be purchased seven days a week at the gazebo building located across from the ice arena. They are of operation on Monday through Friday, nine a.m. to six p.m., and weekends from nine a.m. to four p.m. until June twenty-second. For more information, please visit longbeachny.gov/Beach. Tomorrow, there'll be a landscaping seminar at the Long Beach Library at seven p.m. to learn how you can landscape a healthier Long Beach for your family and pets. The city of Long Beach and Perfect Earth Project have partnered to host a seminar that will discuss best practices for sustainable planting, watering, and maintenance of your lawn and garden. For more information, visit www/perfectearthproject.com. This weekend is our last first Friday. The Long Beach Arts Council is inviting everyone to come out for a taste of the islands from the Caribbean to Hawaii as they wrap up first Fridays plus season. And welcome summer with Lyndon Ashy, Neil Pan, drummer, and with dance Aloha. For information and tickets, visit lbny-arts.org. And this will be held at Bridgewater. Arts on the Boardwalk this weekend, the city of Long Beach will host the Fine Arts and Crafts Show from ten a.m. to five p.m. on the Boardwalk at Riverside Boulevard. Arts on the Boardwalk, a Fine Arts and Crafts Show, is a combination of a Boardwalk Craft Fair and a Kennedy Plaza Fine Art Show. The object is to give artists an opportunity to show and sell their creative work, and to give residents and visitors an opportunity to experience current trends in the visual arts. They will also encourage artists and crafters to come together for a profitable weekend of fun and exposure. The event is sponsored by the city of Long Beach in partnership with Arts on the Plaza. Pride Weekend, the LGBT Network Incorporated Long Island Pride Event returns to Long Beach next weekend with the Twenty-Eighth Annual Pride Parade taking place on Sunday, June tenth. For a full event listing, please visit prideonthebeach.org. The concessions have opened, building on the success of past years. There will be an unprecedented variety of food options on the beach and boardwalk this summer. Three new food trucks have been added to the Shorgus Ford Food Truck Market at Riverside Boulevard and the Boardwalk, adding to the diverse array of cuisines, including healthy options and enhancing the local flavor. In addition to the Shorgus Ford Food Truck Market, there are also the beach and boardwalk parks and the Boardwalk concession building, complete with restaurants. For a full concession map, please visit the city's website. And finally, a reminder, a friendly reminder to commuters, yearly parking permits for the Long Island Railroad Parking Garage in Long Beach are due to expire on June thirtieth. New two thousand and eighteen-nineteen parking permits go on sale Monday, June eleventh. Applications for parking permits are available in the city clerk's office on the third floor at City Hall, or can be downloaded at www-longbeachny.gov/cityclerk. To accommodate commuters, special hours has been set up. In addition to our regular nine-to-five hours, the clerk's office will have extended hours on the following days: Wednesday, June thirteenth, Wednesday, June twentieth, Wednesday, June twenty-seventh, the thirteenth is from seven to nine a.m., the twentieth and the twenty-seventh are from five to seventeen, five to seven fifteen p.m., and that is it.
All right.
Thank you, Acting City Manager Tagney. It was a really nice parade and a solemn day, but it was great to see everyone out on Memorial Day, remembering those lost. So, our first item is a public hearing that is still open.
Our first item is a public hearing for the purposes of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the capital improvement program for the five-year period from July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, I'll just remind folks that this authorization for the capital improvement plan is just that, it's an authorization. So, not everything will be done, or doesn't have to be done, as the city moves, as the city moves forward throughout the year. Unfortunately, it is a stripped-down version of all the projects we would like to do, but this is the situation we find ourselves in. So, these are the most important projects, based on different departments. So, I'll just ask the council if they have any further questions for the DPW Commissioner. Nope. Any residents care to speak, comment on the proposed capital improvement plan? Okay. Seeing no hands, I close the hearing.
The second public hearing is for the purpose of giving citizens an adequate opportunity to publicly present their views on the general summary of the proposed budget for the year July first, two thousand and eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, this hearing also is a continuation of a public hearing. This is the third hearing we're having on this. If you haven't been up to the front, there are some proposed amendments, what we call an errata sheet. I'm not quite sure why. Ms. Blanchett is holding them up, and those are some of the cuts or increases that the council has proposed for the budget, to amend the budget. This is obviously a tough budget season this year, but the council did come together. We do have some revenue enhancements that we can't really see on this budget, so we're hoping to be able to increase revenues through, actually, our DPW Commissioner came up with a really great plan for reviving our sanitation pickup schedule, which we can't reflect in this budget, but, and, you know, also the potential for parking meters, which we would have to have a hearing on. So, there's other things out there. We did come up with various cuts to various departments after talking to different, you know, commissioners and the head of different departments about where we could squeeze every dollar from. We did have a couple of concessions made by a couple of the unions, which we didn't take for various reasons, and I guess that's where we're at right now. I don't know if the council has any more questions about the budget, or would care to make a statement about the budget process? Okay, seeing no, nothing from the council at this time. Oh, sure. If Councilman Bendo wishes to explain something about the process.
Yeah, so, we on the council, obviously, somebody put together a nice form letter, form email, that we've been getting about voting no, and it's just important for people to understand the way the city code of ordinances has the budget process work. If the council votes no on the budget and votes it down, the budget that was submitted by the city manager goes into effect automatically, which would be the twelve-point-four percent tax increase. So, voting no on the budget gives you twelve-point-four percent. As Councilman Aramo said, the council came together, put together the errata sheet, and was able to make some reductions. So, if that is voted down, you actually will get the twelve-point-four percent that everybody's saying vote no for. So, just people need to understand that, that a no vote actually means the twelve-point-four percent budget goes into effect.
So, the errata sheet, I should've said that, the errata sheet brings it down to a nine-point-eight-nine. Approximately, approximately. We're still crunching the numbers, but that's approximate.
Good evening, just to make a clarification. So, yes, the residential tax levy is going up nine-point-eight-nine, but the individual residential tax rate is going up eight-point-three-five.
Eight-point-three-five, as opposed to...
Twelve-point-three-six.
Eight-point-three... Hold on, sir, you're out of order right now. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, so it's an eight-point-three-five, as opposed to a twelve-point-four, so, I think... So, I guess, the council have anything else? Okay, anyone from the public? Right here, I see the first-hand. Mrs., is that Ms. Goodman?
President Aramo, I just have to make a very quick record. This is the first time I'm seeing these budget amendments, and I just needed to be clear that I did not advise the city council on this errata sheet, and I can't advise the city council on this errata sheet because of a clear conflict of interest that I have.
Okay, thank you for making the distinction. The council's not... Corporate counsel just advised the council that he can't make, can't give us advice on the errata sheet because of a conflict of interest, which is fine. We, the only person we would need advice from is our comptroller on the errata sheet. So, thank you for making that clear, Corporation Counsel, Kalnitzky. Yes, Ms. Goodman, name and address.
Good evening. Mona Goodman, fifty-five West Broadway. So, there are two errata sheets.
So, there's, one is personnel, is that correct? Yeah, it's, I think it's two sheets from the same Excel spread, because one sheet is personnel.
So, the one that's front and back are the actual line-by-line changes, and the second sheet is the individual personnel lines that were affected, by title.
So, it's one errata. It was just made in two different Excel spreadsheets?
Got it?
Yes.
Thank you, and this was created by whom?
The five council members.
Well, the actual document was created by the...
Okay.
Who typed it into Excel? Not me.
I know.
The ideas behind it, and what's the information that's in it?
Yes, okay, that was what I, that was what I was questioning.
We prepared our own personnel.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
Elliot Ratner, I live at four-fifty-one West Olive Street. Just a common thing, I've been a Long Beach resident for fifty years, and this is the first time I've attended a meeting.
Welcome.
My, my big question is, now that you mentioned, you know, that this proposed now, instead of twelve-point-four, it was eight-and-a-half, let's say, what is the average increase for the taxpayer? Has anyone obviously come up with that?
We did, yes.
Yes, it's about two-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars per year for the average household.
Okay, and then, I guess this is a side-related thing, I'm a CPA, I specialize in tax, and I really don't understand where that auditing firm, who obviously I know has to audit the companies, not the company, but the city's books, you know, we went from a huge surplus one year and now to this huge deficit. You know, have they, you know, done anything, or, you know, have they, you know, responded? You know, this is, you know, to me, sort of unusual. Like I said, I specialize in tax, so, not in auditing, but I've done audits before in the past, so, you know, what's the situation, or, you know, what did, you know, did the accounting firm, you know, see, or, you know?
Christie, would you wanna, can you speak to, now, we have a couple of different audits, but can you speak to the rainy day fund? I think that's the surplus.
No, I'm not talking about the rainy day fund. The city...
Well, that was...
The city being a nonprofit organization gets audited by a CPA firm.
Two, I think.
Okay, well, two, whatever it may be, and, you know, I just wonder, you know, why they didn't see anything potentially such a large swing from one year to the next.
Okay, just, just one minor correction, the city is a municipal corporation, it's not a not-for-profit.
Okay, well, still gets audited.
So, the, the annual financial audit speaks to make sure that the city is disclosing its numbers correctly, accounting for things correctly. Whether or not the city is running operating deficits is not necessarily their purview, and the city isn't in an overall deficit position, it's just running, it's, it's been running operating deficits for the last few years, just to show the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else care to speak on, yes, Mr. Lynch, please come on up, state your name and address for the record. It's just about the budget, right?
This sheet right here, that just was handed five minutes ago.
Yes.
Quick question, with regards to shade trees. There was a line item that said twenty-five thousand dollars that was proposed, and it's been eliminated.
Yes, I believe that was...
Can someone speak to that, and who that person is?
I believe it was Personnel, right? Christie?
There were two items there. One was part-timers that were there previously in order to water daily the trees that had been planted, the thousands of trees that the city had planted, that was supposed to be a two-year thing, and then it was supposed to sunset. That was not corrected in the, in the proposed budget, and the other ten thousand dollars is what they use to normally plant trees every year. However, we have a grant coming in next year to cover that, so that's why it was removed.
Thank you. I have a question. Doug Duncan, who used to work for the city, works for Liro. He now is still on the city's payroll. I wanted to check to see if this has anything to do with that. I don't understand how somebody that works for Liro could still be on the city payroll as a arborist or what have you. Wouldn't that be a conflict of interest?
I couldn't speak to Personnel items.
I don't know that we have any current contracts with Liro Construction that would cause this conflict, and he is a licensed arborist that is...
No, I understand that, but isn't Liro under contract to do, to oversee the planting of the trees?
Commissioner Morando?
Yeah, first of all, Liro doesn't have a continuing contract with us on tree planting. Doug Duncan does not work for Liro anymore. As a matter of fact, Doug Duncan is in the Army Reserve and does work for us on a part-time basis, on a fee base, when we need him for, as our arborist.
Question answered, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else care to speak about the errata sheet or the budget? Ms. Hessian, please come on up.
Eileen Hessian. I hope I'm speaking on the right thing. Jack's nine million, did we ever consider what happened to that, his extra money, his rainy day fund, or whatever it was? Do we know where that went? Before he left, he said we had an extra nine million.
Do you care to speak about the rainy day fund?
So, that nine million dollars was at the end of fiscal year sixteen. So, fiscal year seventeen, the city ran about a million-dollar deficit, and in fiscal year eighteen, it'll probably run about a two-million-dollar deficit. So, it's about six million dollars, which is what we had talked about at the first budget.
Okay. Also, the biggest thing, of course, is salaries, and very often you say that that's a contractual agreement, we have no choice but to pay it. But who negotiates on the taxpayer's behalf? In other words, the unions or whoever comes in to get raises? Who's on the other side?
Usually outside council.
Outside council?
For CSEA, it's been the Corporation Council. For the PBA and UFA and COA, it's been Bonchonek and King, outside council.
Maybe we should get better people to do some better negotiating for us, because, you know, some of the salaries are just beyond belief.
Well, this year, we're prepared to go into binding arbitration with the PBA, and due to the city's fiscal plight, we're hoping for a favorable result.
Okay, thank you. There were some exempt employees put into union positions without taking tests, which somebody told me is illegal. Has that been corrected?
There are no exempts that were put in without taking a test.
Okay.
All exempts, though, in this errata sheet, just so you're aware, all exempts are foregoing, much to the dismay they raised this year.
Okay, thank you. Also, I see that you saved, like, you know, whatever it is on this amount, which is great, that the five of you got together and worked this out. The beginning of that seems to have been, you know, three or four meetings ago, where Mr. Bendo mentioned, you know, where he started looking at things. So, my only point is, you did a hundred thousand dollars in these couple of weeks, and I think, Commissioner, you had also saved us some money a few weeks ago. If you had been working on this for all the years that you've been in power, imagine how much money you could have saved us. So, I am hoping that you will work together, the five of you, and try to do something about this. There's too many friends and family in here, there are too many people, you know, making more than they should be making, and if you work on this as hard as you worked on this, maybe you can get something done. Thank you.
So, just to speak to that a little bit, so, last year was one, one, one-point-four percent tax increase, because we did shave off a lot and everywhere, and then this year we found ourselves in an operating deficit. So, I think collectively, we're learning that there's a balance, and that, you know, we try and do our best to provide the services that everybody wants, but also, we do have to pay for those services.
I know, we need, we need money for the services, and I appreciate all the services that we have.
Yeah, no, everyone does.
You know who should be here tonight is Jack, answering a few questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hessian. Did you have something? Ms. Volasevich? Please state your name and...
Mary Volasevich.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Kalnitzky, nice to see you.
Good evening, Ms. Volasevich.
I'm, I'm just trying to verify. So, what you're saying is, those positions that you made, you were transferring people into different positions, they are no longer in, you're not putting them in those positions with raises?
No, that's not what I said. I said they did take a civil service test.
They, they did take a service, civil service test? Oh, okay. And I, but I don't see here, what would it be under that you're, you're talking, that we're talking about? It's not here. I don't, I see city clerk, but I don't see the other positions that you had put on, that you were moving people to with the raises. So, they're not getting the raises, but they're going into those positions, that's correct? Am I right?
You're talking too vague. I'm not sure who you're actually talking about, or where you, where you want to go with this.
You, you had some positions. There was a transportation, I think, position, a cashier position. My question to you is, they are going in those positions, but without raises? Is that correct?
No, they were compensated last year, and those raises won't remain.
So, no, okay. So, so someone that was on, in your budget last year is not getting a twenty-thousand-dollar raise. Somebody that is in transportation is not, is not getting a raise, right?
The transportation is not getting a raise, no. The cashier was given a twenty-thousand-dollar stipend while she was acting as a secretary to the city manager.
State your name and address for the record.
Edward Vrona. First, I think it's ridiculous that this budget is being, this amended budget is being released hours before the budget vote. I would have to say this is one of the most untransparent moves created by any government. I checked the budget, uh, budget information on the city every hour today, and yet these amendments were not released, yet they were released two minutes into the city council meeting. If you look at it, the school district, your sister organization, has released three revised budgets in this year, yet you see the revised budget, like I said, two minutes into the meeting. So, again, that is very wrong. I said last meeting, I recommended a decrease in consulting fees for the Corporation Council, yet this budget has a twenty-five-thousand-dollar increase in consulting fees for the Corporation Council. Why? First of all, do we need an increase in consulting fees when we have four full-time lawyers in the Corporation Council already?
Please finish your time.
Also, again, that I, I recommend it in my list to the, to the city council that removal of the Public Relations Department, also known as the Publicity Department. When we're in a fiscal crisis, there is, again, no need for ninety, for over a hundred grand in public relations. And again, I see this budget, it keeps, it keeps exempt employees at very high rates, it keeps police officers making three-hundred-thousand dollars a year, while it cuts salaries and over, and it cuts salaries, and so which, because you can't do anything because of the union contract, you're cutting these people's hours for the people who clean your streets, who clean the beach, who keep this city running. They're the ones in the background, they're the ones doing the work, and you're cutting their pay? It, it just baffles me to see, it, it really does baffle me. And another question I have, again, why is there an increase in consulting fees? In the line-by-line budget, we have a fiscal, fifty thousand dollars in fiscal agent fees, what is that going to? And where is the current audit report? I checked today online, and the only audit report released on publicly is the two thousand and eleven audit report, but again, we have not seen an audit report, and the fiscal year ended in June thirtieth. The comptroller will answer my questions.
Okay, so, I can address the consulting fees, and I think every council member here will agree, it actually is probably too low. We have some huge cases that the city is battling with, and that's just the way the legal system works, so, and the twenty-five-thousand-dollar increase, I think people would be interested to know, that twenty-five-thousand-dollar increase was the raise that Corporation Counsel Agostisi received. He declined the raise, so rather than just take that off the tax rolls, we decided that we needed it in, I think we all five of us agreed, we needed that in the consulting fees.
Well, so, are these lawyers unable to do their jobs then? Four full-time lawyers?
I don't think you can comprehend the amount of legal work that a city actually has to do, and actually, the legal staff we have is quite underpaid.
If I can also respond just for a second, it's not all outside council, and while our inside council is incredibly competent and represent the city regularly very well, there are certain expertise that people have, and it's not only legal fees, it's not only outside... And it's not only legal fees, it's not only outside counsel for just attorneys. There are other consultants that are included in that line. As we prepare for litigation, that everybody's read about in the paper, it's quite significant, we need to make sure that we have the reserves there, in order to prepare properly for it. Just like you would want the experts to testify on your behalf, if you needed it. The city needs that as well, and we want to make sure that we have the very best.
Well, I just think that when you're giving to taxpayers an eight percent, nine percent increase, that you should be looking at every single consultant you're being paid.
The increase to the taxpayers would be a lot higher if we didn't have those consultants, and juries returned massive verdicts against the city. Just want you to know that. It'd be like a hundred million dollars, okay?
Thank you.
Kristi, can you talk about the publication of the audit reports?
Well, I'll answer in order. So the fiscal agent fees are the cost that the city incurs when it borrows. That's what it pays its bond counsel, that's what it pays Moody's, that's what it pays its fiscal advisor every time it issues debt. That's what those fees are. And the 2017 audit is still ongoing, and we expect that report in the next 90 days.
I, I see almost every business, nonprofit, municipality has released their audit report for the last fiscal year. What is, it's almost a year at this point, what, what, what's going on?
There's just been a lot of turnover in the higher echelons of the city.
But that's an outside audit form, you need an external audit, has nothing to do with your internal staff.
I'd appreciate it if you don't interrupt me. It is an outside audit, but you need the cooperation of the people inside, you need the expertise inside, to prepare the documents, to prepare the analyses, to do the analytics. So it is an external audit, but if you don't have the staff inside, in order to support them, then they don't have anything to work with.
Well, if I'm a borrower for the city, I mean, I wouldn't give the city money anyway, but it seems, it seems, it seems very wrong that you are withholding this audit from the taxpayers and the borrowers.
Thank you. Ms. Blanchett. Please state your name and address for the record.
You just always want to know where I live. That's so creepy. Allison Blanchett. Had I not jumped up and passed these out, I don't know how people would have gotten them. Ryan, you owe me, doing your job.
I announced that they were up there, and folks could come up and get one.
Yeah, and then everyone would have to rush up, and then they wouldn't be able to hear you. But anyways, you should have had them out earlier.
They were prepared up until the final minute.
Well, you should have had them done earlier.
They were prepared at the final minute.
You should have had them done earlier.
They were prepared at the final minute.
Do you want to keep going? I'll go three minutes, Aravo. So, the city, I, I'm having trouble understanding this, because I didn't have any time, because I was busy handing them out for you. But the city manager position that 329, so that's the city management and all of his staff, so would that include, like, the deputy, the assistant, all of that stuff? It'd be great, I don't know why this wasn't broken down, like, by each item in there. Is that his whole office, or his or her whole office?
It is broken down on the second sheet.
Sorry, I know I'm eating up valuable time, trying to understand the sheet that you gave me, no time to read. All right, I'm going to move on to the next thing. Transportation. I brought this up at that last meeting, about budget stuff. You have a head of transit, and a head of transportation. Did you, did you straighten that out on this? Did you straighten that out on this? It's a very simple question, and you should know this.
Well, that's similar to...
Let me, let me continue. You had the head of transit is Michael Robinson, for $117,122, in addition to his position and salary as deputy city manager. In a, now, that was a brand-new position that you created for your friend, Michael. And in addition to that, we already have a head of transportation, Brendan Costello, who on the budget was, we're looking at $105,000 plus, plus three dispatchers. I see some overtime here. That overtime predominantly seems to go to the dispatchers, who collectively are making an average of slightly over $100,000 per year. In addition to urban engineers, who you've hired at over $65,000 in grant money that should have gone to offset the cost of Brendan Costello, but instead, you're using them to do his job. So explain to me, did you correct these issues that I have brought up to each and every one of you in multiple emails? Emails saying, who is going to respond to this? Who is going to respond to this? Bendo, Anissa, thank you. Did you discuss this? Are these two people still making that same amount?
Yes.
You created a new job while you cut bus service in half last month. This is shameful. We still have bus schedules with Eileen Goggins' name on it, at the station. This is disgusting, how you consistently, for years, have shit on bus riders. Shame.
Anyone else care to speak on the budget? Ms. Noriegan?
So I just have a couple of questions. Oh, sorry, Noriegan. Don't start my three minutes.
Sorry, Ms. Egan.
Thank you, you can start.
Name and address for the record, and then I'll start your time.
Noriegan. So I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Agostisi refused, or didn't take his $25,000 raise. Is that, I'm wondering, because the residents brought up about the payouts and everything? And just to do a quick aside, has all the payout sheets been received by all council members? Okay, so with trees, can you just explain to me, I guess, Ms. Hightower? I was on the understanding that we had got money from FEMA for the trees, and that anyone that had died, that they would come back and replace, and that they were responsible for watering, and et cetera, et cetera. So I'm just wondering, is this $35,000 coming from that? Or is there a separate group in the city that is responsible for watering, like, I guess, our new trees? Or is this FEMA trees?
So this item was already answered just a few minutes ago. It was two part-timers that should have come off, and also the $10,000 for trees that we were going to purchase, but we received a grant for that.
And is that included in, like, the LIRA grant? Like, when they came...
So that's all long done. Those trees are, you know, if they had a year from the date they were planted, any, any that fall into that purview is still under that year. So if we planted any trees under that contract, they usually have a year. Just like the ones that are going to be planted now would have generally a year. If they die, they get replaced. But these are under a grant, so that may be different.
Okay. And then this young gentleman that seriously needs to start running for council, he's amazing. The external audit that he's referring to, is this the state audit?
No, it's, it's the external financial statement audit, not the state audit. And just to clarify, one more thing on the trees, FEMA does not pay for watering of the trees.
Right.
They pay for the physical trees themselves and the planting. The city was responsible for watering them.
Okay, and I never understood that, because in New York City, they watered them. So I never understood that, but that's water under the bridge. So, but the...
Water on the tree.
Or didn't want to, but it's somebody up here say, water under the bridge, a couple of weeks ago? So, but with the audit that this young gentleman was talking about, is this the audit from Denapoli's office, that he hasn't seen from, or who's the external audit?
No, it's the, it's just our financial statement audit.
And that's not available to us?
No, it's not available yet. It's not available to anybody, it doesn't exist yet.
But from what, what year is the last year that I can see the...
June 30th, 2016. That should be on the website, we'll, we'll double-check that. Make sure it is.
It is.
Okay. And every other year prior to that is there?
I don't know how many years the city keeps on the website. I would think at least the last five.
Since deficit financing was...
No, I'm talking about the annual financial statements, the ones that are always dated June 30th. Each day, 16, 15. We can double-check that.
Back to 13? Okay, so we could, okay.
So they're, they're up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. State your name and address for the record.
Kim Musman, 77 Oregon Street. And, hi.
Lower the microphone.
Just bring it down, there you go.
Hi, Kim Musman, 77 Oregon Street. Nobody ever told me I was too low, when I spoke. So the reason I came out tonight is because I was concerned about something that I read in Newsday, and I, it could have been quoted wrong, or please just correct me if I'm wrong. It said something about an idea about subcontracting out the morning and aftercare that's currently being provided by Youth and Family Services. I guess it was thrown around as an idea. And I'm just here to advocate for keeping it as part of our city program, as is. I think your kids went through the program, Ms. Donella, and Ms. Liz, and Ms. Cole, and, and these are great people, and it's a great program. It's like family for us, for my son. And I just want to please urge you to not subcontract out that program, or change it in any way. I think it's a really well-run city program. And I just really hope you can keep it as is. And if, I see there are some cuts to salaries and things like that, I just really hope that's not going to affect the people at the lowest rung of that system, because they're the ones who are working directly with our kids. And, you know, like I said, there, we put our children's health and safety and their, and education in their trust, and I really just don't want to see their salaries go down at all. So, I'm, can you just answer the...
There was no, there was never anything on the table to cut the pre-care or after-care programs at the schools.
And not to subcontract it out? Because that was in Newsday.
No, I think they might have mischaracterized the potential to, what was it, the daycare?
The daycare. One of the things that I did in my budget presentation was I highlighted certain areas for the council to consider, whether we, you wanted to privatize, or, or cancel the program. It was, there was some very drastic things that were in that. The council rejected it outright.
And that was for the full-day daycare, I think, which was run at Magnolia.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musman. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
James Kirkland, Riverside Boulevard, Long Beach, New York. I, I was looking through the, the original budget, and I noticed that the increase in healthcare has gone up about 24%, a little over 20%. Has that been addressed in any manner?
What do you mean by addressed? The city, that's very little control.
Well, I mean, a 24% increase in premiums would certainly get me looking around to for another source.
Well, again, that's something that's contractual. So the fact that the city uses NYSIP for its healthcare is in all of its employment contracts, and it has to be a substantial negotiation.
That's like perpetual, and forever?
As, as it exists right now, there's, I don't believe there's any plans to change it. I also... You know, the healthcare industry overall are seeing huge double-digit increases, many years. And, you know, the city's company is not, is not any different there.
Now, does it have anything to do with the fact that they get a Cadillac healthcare plan?
There are only two options within NYSIP. And the city does have the higher option, but it always has. And again, that's also in the contracts, that the city will use that.
Because everybody I've talked to, I asked them about, do you get your co-pays for your premiums, and your, and your doctor visits paid for? And they said, no, not me. So it seems like it's something we'd all like to have.
The plan that the city has, does have co-pays, and they, they do pay...
I think that you're mixing up something. It's the union, right?
I'm not sure, I just said that co-pays and drugs.
There are, I mean, I can speak for my own, I don't know...
I think the union, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the, the union actually reimburses co-pays. So they do pay, they do, the folks, the members do pay co-pays, but then they're reimbursed by the union. So it's separate from the cost.
I have the, just so you know, I have the same plan through my own employer, through the state. And we do pay co-pays. And it increases, it increases every single year, what the co-pays actually are, and who's covered. It's the same as, the challenges that are facing those who have this plan are the same that are facing other people. I mean, our doctors are on and off the plan, the co-pays increase, the, for medication, co-pays increase, it, it goes back and forth.
Okay. And the other thing is, is that the, the city's been basically running on about 13 cents per dollar surplus after, after salaries and, and healthcare benefits. With your reductions, do you have any sense of, are we up to 15 cents, or maybe a quarter, with these reductions?
Without knowing how you calculated that, there's no way for me to give you an estimate then.
Because that 13 cents per dollar doesn't give you much room to play, or to do anything else in the city, to make any kind of improvements.
Again, I don't know where you're getting 13 cents per dollar, so there's no way for me to...
I think he's referring to the discretionary budget amount. How much is left after salary benefits, things like that.
As far as calculating the percentage off the cuff, it's not something.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkland. Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Deana Fiori. I have a question, since we have not replaced either position. This budget shows a city manager salary of $330,000 plus per year. Doesn't seem to be that we're anywhere near changing or filling that position, so that number probably could be reduced, if it takes us another six months to fill that position. So that number should be adjusted. And on top of that, we have no comptroller salary put in there, except for $7,500. I would hope that, well, no offense, Ms. Hightower, I know you have another job, but we need to fill that position as well. So why is there no comptroller salary being shown? Because that'll automatically change our budget numbers that's being shown.
Yeah, so I think, this is just the errata sheet. So the comptroller salary is in the budget, I believe. We just didn't change it. And the, the reason that the, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason why the city manager line, that's not a $331,000 salary for him, it's the whole department. We lowered some of their salaries within the department, so that's why it would show up on the errata sheet. So we are, we are budgeting for a city manager, because it would be foolish not to, just like the comptroller, then we find ourselves...
Have we adjusted those salaries, though, on, in, in this case? Because as I said, it's, we're over six months that we've filled those positions. It could quite possibly, at this rate, be another six months before we fill those positions.
No, it won't.
Okay, so maybe if we're looking to reduce numbers, maybe we should look at that, unless we have an ETA on when those jobs will be filled. No? You know, if we're, you know, for every $300,000...
As the vice president just said very lowly, as soon as possible.
I'm sure you would like that to happen, no doubt, you'd like to be out of it. But I know you're not collecting that salary either. So in all fairness to you, I'm not, I'm not trying to do it.
Would you like to speak to why we should leave it?
Yeah, just, so, either way, once we do get a city manager and a comptroller, those salaries will have to be in full in the budget next year. So it doesn't always make sense to reduce something for just the one year, when you know you're going to have to put it back next year.
Okay. But we're looking to save money this year, so...
And if those positions aren't filled, that money will be saved, it'll just kind of maybe help with a little bit of surplus.
It could also be higher than, to fill, to refill these positions at the salaries you're putting, it could very well cost us more money, considering our rate of pay maybe not up to par to get the right person for the job either. So it's just, it's just a thought.
And Ms. Fiori, I'm sorry, on page 56 of the budget, I think it has the information you're looking for. On page 56 of the budget, it has the breakdown for the city manager's office, and the comptroller. That's the drill down you're looking for.
Okay. Do we know when we're going to replace those jobs, while I'm here? Any thoughts? Any thoughts that we're going to replace the two biggest positions we have in this city, since we're in the crop that we're in?
I don't think, I don't think we can answer that question, but I also don't think we're going to find a comptroller until we have a full-time city manager. Based on the interviews they've done for comptroller.
Okay, so where are we at with that progress?
We're still working on it, we've been a little distracted the last month.
God, we're still, I'm going to have, that's my next button, I'm still working on it. Okay, we need to work a little harder on that position, because we're adopting a budget, you're looking to adopt a comprehensive plan, and you're looking to make changes to zoning. And we don't have leadership, nothing personal, we don't have the person that's going to take us into the next year.
Point taken, thank you. Anyone else care to speak on the budget? Come on up, sir. Name and address for the record.
Yeah, hi, good evening, Jay Gosler. I got to apologize, I was reviewing these myself, and I know there was some conversation going on. So we started out with a proposed budget that included 12.3% tax increase, is it correct? And we're now down to?
8.35.
Okay, so let's say about a 4% reduction, nominally? Now, I'm looking at these erratas, and I see a 526K reduction in revenue, and I see what basically amounts to a corresponding 526K reduction in expenditures. So those seem to be a wash. So these don't explain the 4% reduction. Would you guys be able to make me understand, perhaps, where we're achieving that 4% reduction?
I think it's just a budgetary, the way it's written here, Kristi could explain it.
Well, the ins and outs have to equal, because the budget has to be balanced. So either your revenues will zero out, because you're increasing some, increasing others, or you're, you're increasing revenues, increasing expenses, or decreasing both. Either way, the two numbers will always net to zero, when you have a balanced budget. Either way, the two numbers will always net to zero when you have a balanced budget. As far as being about half a million, other revenue streams were found committed to putting forth. So, that was, that allowed us to increase some revenues and then decrease the property taxes accordingly.
All right, well, my question then would be, if there were other revenues that materialized somehow, why aren't they reflected in these errata sheets? Aren't these errata...
The taxes are going to go down about a million dollars, but yet you're only seeing a half a million dollar decrease because the other piece has brought in extra revenue.
All right, well, but to me, these cancel each other out. That still doesn't explain the 4 percent. Don't get me wrong, I'm happy that, I'm happy that you guys were able to reduce this thing 4 percent. I'm happier still that you guys didn't sacrifice your paid fire department, make them the scapegoats for your own mismanagement, as I totally expected you to do. But I do have another question. On the fire department, I see here that you list four lieutenants and one XO. I'm aware that there are five lieutenants and one XO. Is there a plan to demote somebody in the fire department?
Not that I'm aware of, but we'll double-check that number.
And I'm just going to ask you again for the third meeting in a row. Do you guys have any fix on the current obligation that you guys owe for various forms of time to the city's workforce? I've asked the last three meetings, and I got this, pretty much the same response. I've been advised since then that in last year's budget, that that number was posted as $29 million, last year's budget. You guys don't, nobody looks at this budget hard enough to understand that? It's a pretty important thing. It's unbonded debt. It's hanging over our heads, it's not going away. Do you guys, have anybody had a chance to look at it? Do we know what it is for this current budget? No? Great job.
So, that liability is measured once a year. So, at June 30, 2017, it was about 30 million, but what it consists of, it's not unbonded debt. What it consists of is all accruals that employees have available to them, vacation, sick comp, and most of them take it in time. People take their vacation, people take sick days. So, we will not necessarily pay that out in bonded debt. At the same time, it also encompasses all, you know, 300-plus of every city employee over the next 20 to 30 years. A lot of them that have it won't retire for 20 or 30 years, and they'll use it over that time.
And there have, and there have been some concessions in the union negotiations where new hires are capped at those banks.
Anybody else care to speak? Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Danielle from Shore Road. I have two questions. One is the last one on the first page. It says Art Council, Supplies and Materials. They proposed a budget of $1,750,000, yet they've upped it to an adopted budget of What are they doing that they needed to raise it over $9,000?
Okay, so that is the First Fridays program. There was a three-year funding stream put in place, so it was about $25,000 divided over the three years. So, it was not, it was mistakenly not included in the proposed budget, so that supplies and materials went up the exact same amount that their funding stream for this year comes in.
So, it was an oversight, and now we're paying for it?
Yes.
Okay. One other question was...
It was an oversight, hold on, hold on. It was an oversight in the proposed budget. It wasn't, it wasn't that it's not been paid. It's just an oversight, that type of...
I have the utmost respect for the police department. I see, though, the fire department and many others have their regular salary proposed and overtime, yet I'm only seeing one line for the police being overtime salary. There is no salary line for police. So, there's a...
You're looking at the changes.
Okay.
You're looking at what's changed in the budget.
Okay.
And if it hasn't changed, it's not listed.
Okay.
So, it just means that it's not changing from the proposed.
Okay, well, didn't know that till now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care? Come on up, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Mike Delory, Long Beach.
Thank you.
Good evening. Could you, could the council explain to me what you've adopted, what your policies are, what will be instituted to keep the department heads accountable for overtime? Are you going to review it monthly, quarterly? Because for the past five or six years, it's consistently not, it has exceeded your budget. I understand that there are items, there's emergencies, there's situations that are uncontrollable. However, a couple of, maybe a year or two ago, I had mentioned to the former city manager that, "Why don't you have quarterly reports? And you don't have to give them to the public. You can give it between yourselves, so you know what you're doing." You guys are all elected by us, and it's been said before that we put our trust in you so we don't have to. I could tell you from personal experience, I don't have any trust, and it's not collective here. It's, and I don't want to say that. So, I'm going to move on, but I highly recommend that you do that for your own sake. Okay? Next. The financial statements are not available.
Can I just answer that question?
Yes.
Oh, it's all right, I'll let you finish your time.
If you don't mind, I'm going to go through a couple of topics.
No problem, I know you were done.
I know I'm going to exceed the three-minute limit. Financial statements are not available. I foiled it, I called the comptroller's office, and I, and I know they're not available. I'd like the current comptroller to advise me, or us, or you, when it will be available. Does it affect bond financing? I am sure you're being asked of the status of the financial statements from outside parties, is that correct? Do you have an issue? Do you need more help? Do you expect it to be done within the next 30 days?
No, as I stated earlier, we expect it to be done within the next 90 days.
Will a state comptroller come in to help you?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Next. The bond counsel, is that Bond Shoniken King?
No, our bond counsel is Harris Beach.
Harris Beach, okay. Does Harris Beach also the bond counsel for this school district? Oh, you wouldn't know that.
I don't know.
Okay. Yes? Thank you. Do we have a list of termination pay for the 1819 budget? Because you're probably going to want to pay that out in December, January, February?
Yes, the list exists.
There is a, there is a list? Okay. Is that list available? Not tonight, but will it be available?
I think in general it's foilable, but I don't know necessarily how the city wants to make it available.
It's available and foilable?
I don't know. I don't know if it's foilable. It does exist, though.
It does exist, because that's the number you have in the budget. Yeah, I'm talking about next year.
We don't...
Sure, so, the city...
Anticipated retirements.
Well, no, these aren't anticipated. These are people who have already retired that took their payout over three years.
Right.
So, we know, we, the way the budget is formed, is we know the ones that we have to pay that are taking them in bi-weekly payments over three years, and then we put in a little bit of estimates for possible retirements, a few comps, things like that, and that's how we estimate the budget every year.
Right, and you have it under financing revenue, I bet, or finance?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. That is what I was going to ask to look at, not tonight, but can it be made available? And if it is available, does it have to be foilable?
That's a question for the city.
Fine. I'll move on. I know I'm almost done. Time's up.
Okay, but we'd like to respond to the, to the overtime question.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to your first question. First of all, I just wanted to say that that was a great question, excellent question. I want to thank you because you've raised this issue several times, and I just wanted to make it clear that, again, producing and delivering the budget that we've, and the revisions that we produce today, that we presented to you, that was a priority. However, in our conversations with everyone that's here in terms of the council, we said that this was going to be a priority moving forward, that we would move forward with procedures and policies so that we can have that level of accountability, so that we won't have to come back here next year with the same questions and some of the same challenges. But we decided that as a council, but for right now, the priority was the budget. And I also wanted to, just for point of information, some people had raised concerns with respect to this errata sheet. We were still working upstairs up until 7:00 to make sure that everything was accurate. That's why there was a delay with respect to getting this information out to the public. We, and we want, we want you to know that this is, we take this seriously. This is serious. So, it's not that we were upstairs holding the errata sheet from anyone. We were still working to the last moment because we wanted to make sure that all of our numbers were accurate so that we could present this information to the body.
Thank you, councilwoman.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to add that we have made some changes to the overtime policy that I'll just ask the acting city manager to speak to.
Thank you.
A couple of months ago, I put in that all overtime has to directly go through me. In the last pay period, we saved $97,000, and the pay period before that, a similar amount. So, I've been very, very careful monitoring the overtime, and I would strongly recommend my successor take that lead.
Thank you.
And if I can also respond to your, your original question was, does somebody monitor it and are we aware of it? In our packets, every week we receive a printout of the, per department, a printout of overtime and where and how we are and what we're doing. So, we are aware of it. It comes, it either comes every week or every other week, I don't remember offhand. It's every other, sorry.
Okay, so you feel comfortable that what you're getting now, you're a little bit more informed, or?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, thank you very much. I know it's not an easy process.
Thank you, Mr. Delory. I appreciate your time and questions. Anybody else care to speak on public hearing number two? Carmine, you're on deck. Come on up, sir. Okay, Carmine, it's you.
Carmine Convertino, Long Beach, New York. I'm mentioning this at the budget meeting tonight because I was told that there's a problem on Beach Street. Every night around 3:00 PM, the traffic goes from as far as you can see into East Atlantic Beach, all the way to New York Avenue. And I'm mentioning it because I was told that they cannot afford, or we cannot afford to hire more specials or police officers to assist with this. I don't know if changing lights or the rhythm of the lights, however you might say it, is going to help, but one car making a left turn can back up the traffic basically 10 blocks at least. I don't think it's a summer problem, because I've been noticing it for the last six months. I'm on that road every day, and I've noticed very recently, actually Friday, that when the summer traffic hit the city, it went in both directions on Beach Street, not just heading east. So, that's the summer situation that's, we're looking into, or looking forward into. And I just want to mention it, if you need to add a few, a few dollars to hire more specials or police officers or whoever, I don't know, I just know it's a mess, you may want to add that to your budget.
So, someone directing traffic at the corner of Beach and...
Well, no, you need a couple of, a couple of blocks, like maybe where the bus stops are, you know, Wyoming, Arizona, more towards the west, you know, Tennessee, just something to keep the traffic flowing. Maybe even directing people up to Park Street or Park Avenue to go through town. I know you don't want them to pass your businesses, you want them to see the businesses and the bars and the restaurants, et cetera, but it's really, it's really, it's an accident waiting to happen, basically. That's what I wanted to say about the budget. I would also, while I'm up here, like to thank all of you back there. Everybody's quick to point the finger and to be what I consider disrespectful to you guys. I know you all a little bit, I know some of you more than others, and I know you have the well-being of Long Beach in, deep, deep, deep in your hearts, and I want to say thank you, from Carmine to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Carmine. And I'll, I'll ask the traffic agent. Thank you, Carmine, and I'll ask the traffic department to look into that, especially with the summer season upon us. Mr. Ashmead?
Good evening, city council members and acting city manager. Just a couple of things. I haven't read the errata sheet, it's too small and whatnot, but anyway, a couple of things. First, at the last meeting on May 15, the city council member's supposed to get the payout information and the letter that went to the New York State Comptroller asking for an investigation of separation payout. Someone asked earlier whether you got all the information now, and I think the answer was yes.
Yes, slightly off-topic, but yes, we've gotten all the information we requested.
It all relates back to the budget. But has anyone gotten the letter to the New York State Comptroller asking for the investigation? That was supposed to be delivered at the same time.
I don't know, I got 100 emails. There's 105 emails, I don't know if that was... I'm not sure. It's not really on topic for the 2018 budget, anyway.
It is, it relates to an investigation of our finances, Mr. Kalinsky. Don't shut me down.
No, the 2018 budget... It is happening, though, Mr. Ashmead. It is happening.
You said on the record that everyone would have the letter to the New York State Comptroller asking for an investigation of the separation payouts because you guys didn't want to do it yourself. It was supposed to be delivered, what I'm hearing is it wasn't delivered, and we're over two weeks later. Related to that, related to the budget, our former city manager said that he got more than his 30 percent of sick days because he got an opinion from a city council, a city lawyer, and that's why it was applied evenly. I'm just curious whether you investigated whether all exempt employees that received separation payouts since 2012 in fact got 100 percent, or did they get 30 percent? Do you know?
So, it's all being audited by the New York State Comptroller.
Okay, thank you. So, we've run structural deficits for year after year after year, and I want to know what, if anything, you guys have done other than just trying to make budget or reduce it this year, what you've done to sort of correct the process that we end up in every year running structural deficits, if anything. And if you want, let me just rattle off a few questions, and then maybe you can answer to that. And tied to that, we know what the big issues are. Overtime, I heard Mr. Tagney say he's been like a hawk on it recently, but he also says he wants out of this job. So, what is this structure? What are the controls that are going to be in place when Mr. Tagney is gone that will stop overtime from running amok and is running millions and millions of dollars over every year? What about, what are we going to do about the fact that we have in so many departments tons of generals in relation to the infantry? People that seem to be in those positions just because they got promoted and they could get paid more. How do we deal with that? That seems like a big part of the reasons we have structural deficits. And then there's the issue about creating positions, which some, which some of the residents have already discussed. Also, I want to know whether, if we have any idea, maybe city corporation council could answer, what is the timing on the Haberman litigation? Because I don't think that's dealt with in this budget and is an expectation that it will have to be dealt with in this year's budget, or is that something that, because of litigation, will be past that?
I'm not, I'm not sure what the timeline is. We have outside counsel for that matter, I don't, I don't know what the timeline is.
All right, but there's no budgeting for paying a $50 million judgment right now in this budget, correct?
I don't know what's budgeted in the budget, but as far as the Haberman case, I'm not sure what the timeline is.
So, if you could just address my comments about the structural deficits and what we might be doing to put in controls, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Ashmead John, again, I just answered your question a few minutes ago when I addressed Mr. Kirkland, and that is that once again, as a council, we'll be working to create or to revise policy and procedures. In other words, I think it's clear, we'll be looking at that charter and making some changes. That's the only way to move forward at this time. That was my conversation. That was our conversation, and we've, we've had several meetings in the past two months, and that's where we are. And when that time comes, we'll be able to report and share with, with the general community when we have some, some procedures in place. With respect to the second question, I think a lot of that, and within any budget, you have contractual obligations. And so when you go in and you look, and I'm sure you, you've looked carefully, and you'll see that there are different people who are in different levels of management, but throughout that budget, a lot of those people, what, are a part of a particular contract? And so when you have contractual obligations, there's not so much that you can do in terms of moving that management around. It's, it's one of those issues where we, it's an uncontrollable variable. And so that's why we'll have to be creative with creating revenue, but then also, obviously, putting some procedure in place, so that we can, once again, maintain a balanced budget.
If I can just expand on, on some of the things that Councilwoman Moore said. If you look at the beginning of the errata sheet that was provided, you'll see that there's a number of revenue sources that the city council has been able to propose in the last few weeks. We've all committed, I think, to being as creative as possible in terms of finding new sources of revenue. I think you'll, you can see here, there's a number of different ones that are listed, but there's also ones that we continue to research and look into in order to bring in new sources of income and new sources of revenue into the city. So I think that's a commitment that each of us have made in terms of, of preparing this budget, that those sources of revenue actually are realized.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Anyone else care to speak on budget, the budget, public hearing number two? Okay. Seeing no hands, I close the hearing.
Item one is a resolution authorizing the adoption of the capital improvement program for five years from July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2023, inclusive. The hearing has been held on this item already. Item two is a resolution authorizing the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, appropriating some set forth therein, and determining and fixing the real estate tax levy. The hearing has been held on this item already. Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase recreation, youth, and family services and lifeguard t-shirts, sweatshirts, sweatpants, jackets, and hats from the lowest responsible bidders. Okay, we run a summer camp in youth and family services, where we provide t-shirts for the participants, so we can identify the children as being part of our program. Same with the lifeguards and the recreation camps. Just as a quick aside, the bid that we currently have expires on June 5th. So without approving this new bid, we would effectively be out of business on June 6th, if we need to purchase stuff for the camps.
How many bids did you receive?
I think it was 28 pages worth of bids, and I think there were a dozen vendors.
Any other questions by the council?
Just, just a couple. Do we basically re-equip all employees each using new clothing and things like that?
There is a system in the lifeguards, in the contract, where they do get certain things every year, and then they get, they go a couple of years without raincoats, some of the other, higher-ticket items. Most of this is for the actual participants. The junior lifeguards, they're always new people. The, the camp attendees, they get a new shirt every year.
For the lifeguards, it is contractual. But, but I guess the only question I had is, kind of related to that, is, the, the resolution says, basically, has this, getting 42 different types of items, but there's a lot of common, it's like eight different t-shirts from vendors, eight different jackets, five sweatshirts, you know, things like that. Would there be any, and I guess it's not going to happen right now, but any potential savings going forward in doing some standardizing? Maybe not customizing every jacket, every t-shirt to every, you know, niche of department or event?
Yes, we, we have started doing that, like with our races. The medals are all standardized, the t-shirts the city managers race, instead of saying, "City manager's race 2018." So there has been some of that that has combined.
I can say with the lifeguard contract, the most recently adopted one, we began alternating years for certain clothing managers to offer to buy them in bulk, that the city would stay with.
Questions from the public? T-shirts, hats, raincoats. Seeing no hands, next item.
Okay, item four is a resolution rescheduling publication for hearing and rescheduling the public hearing regarding the ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding garbage and refuse. Decided it's a publication only, a hearing will be held June 19th at 7:00 PM. Item five is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding special events. Decided it's a publication only, a hearing will be held June 19th at 7:00 PM. Onto the vote. Item one is a resolution authorizing the adoption of the capital improvement program for five years from July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2023, inclusive. Who introduces the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
First of all, I want to just ask the commissioner, and, and as we figure out the projects going forward, I would just ask that you continue to work with, to the extent that it's possible, with in-house employees here in the city, so that we can continue to do what we've done all this time, and just continue to communicate with the CSEA in doing so. But with that, I vote yes.
President Aramo.
Yes.
Item two is a resolution authorizing the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, appropriating some set forth therein, and determining and fixing the real estate tax levy. Do I have any motions on this item at this time?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the errata sheet into the budget and to update the total tax levy. The tax levy and the homestead and the non-homestead tax rates to reflect such changes.
Do I have a second?
I second. I second.
Okay, on the motion. Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aramo.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll recall. Item two, it's a resolution authorizing the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019, appropriating some set forth therein, and determining and fixing the real estate tax levy. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item as amended?
I will.
Who's second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
So, again, just a reminder for all those people that sent us emails saying, "Vote no." If we do that, you get into 12.4% tax increase. So, council put in a lot of hours to get this number down, and so we did it. It's still, may not be what you like, but it's what we need to do to move the city forward. So I vote yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
I echo everything Councilman Bendo just said. We actually went line by line through the entire budget, finding any place that we could recast projections. With that, I vote yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so in March 2017, Cornell University conducted a statewide survey in collaboration with the New York State Conference of Mayors and the Association of Towns of the State of New York to evaluate the causes and the responses to fiscal stress. What are some of the drivers of fiscal stress? Well, 98% indicated aging infrastructure. 73% indicated local governments like ours with limited ability to raise revenues. And 71% indicated state mandate procedures coupled with reduction of state aid. And that sounds similar to where we are as a city. So how did some of the other local municipalities respond? They increased grant funding pursuits, they explored shared services agreements, but they also sought, sought to develop a coalition, which included members of the local business community, the civics, local residents, to help with the response. And so I propose tonight that a coalition be developed now to work together in anticipation of next year's budget. With that being said, thank you. With that being said, this is still a sad night in the City of Long Beach. This is my third budget, and for the third time, the residents have bailed out our government with tax increases and fees. Balancing a budget should never be done by raising taxes as an easy fix on the backs of the taxpayers. Good government lessens deficits, reduces taxes, is transparent with respect to sharing information regarding spending and sources of revenue. Ms. Heschin pointed out earlier that something should have been done earlier, but I can say that in 2016, at least for those who were here in 2016, we did this. We spent hours again, weekends, late nights, trying to create a budget that we were all proud of. We did it, but without the controls in place, all of our hard work has come to naught, and now we're here in the same place in 2018. In 2017, during the budget process, I called for personnel evaluations to address some of the uncontrollable overtime allotments. Once again, on April 17th of this year, I called for budget reform. But tonight, it's important for all of us as residents to know that the council met to address the budget, budget concerns on several dates. I can name many of them, but it's not important. What's important is, we work together because we value the fact that this is a serious time in the life of our city. Regardless of the tax percentage that we're presenting tonight, the work has to begin tomorrow, so that we can restore public trust and also the fiscal health of our city. Tonight's vote is a small drop in a historic bucket of fiscal mismanagement. And so tonight, we speak to you as a council to say that we can no longer turn our heads, because the City of Long Beach deserves better. I'm pleased with the conversations that I've held with my colleagues for the past two months. Several revenue options have been openly discussed, and they are promising. I look forward to working with a community coalition, so that we can dig deep and find some other solutions. I also look forward to working with my colleagues on assessing current fiscal process as well as procedures, and making the necessary changes, the checks and balances, to our city charter. With that, I vote yes.
Vice President Diamond.
So I echo all of the things that all of my colleagues have said. I don't think any of us here tonight want to vote for a budget that imposes a tax increase upon our residents. But as Councilman Bendo said, no vote on this budget only means a 12% tax increase, while a yes vote on this budget. We've worked really hard to bring down this levy and to ensure that we're imposing as small an impact on our residents as we can. The budget is, as it stands, as amended, continues the standard of living that we have come to expect here in Long Beach, while at the same time protecting our workforce and the services that we have come to expect and enjoy. So while it's a difficult vote, and nobody wants to do it, with that, I commend my colleagues on a job well done. It's been a very long and difficult road, but I, I vote yes.
President Aramo.
So with, without having a permanent city manager and a comptroller, it has been a difficult process. And to speak to the gentleman that spoke about structural changes, I think it'll be required of the next city manager to discuss the structure changes that we need. And having a community forum, I think, is a great idea. Because when folks came up here, we were here, what, twice until 11 o'clock at night or so? No one actually asked to cut in services. That's not what, what folks asked for. So this budget maintains our services and our standard of living without drastic cuts. So it's, it's unfortunate that it is as high as it is, but it's a balanced budget, and it's something that I think we could be proud of, that the city won't go into fiscal stress. So with that, I vote yes.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase recreation, youth, and family services and lifeguard t-shirts, sweatshirts, sweatpants, jackets, and hats from the lowest responsible bidders. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aramo.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution rescheduling publication for hearing and rescheduling the public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding garbage and refuse. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Aramo.
Yes.
And finally, item five is a resolution authorizing publication for hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances of the City of Long Beach regarding special events. Who introduces the move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?[1755.12]